Thanks.
There really isn't.
It's a successful marriage.
They're gonna have to, you have to move the technicals. It shouldn't be turned on.
Expeditions.
The official notice. Official notice that's going in the paper, Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I wouldn't even have known that. Yeah, that's full.
Ready? CSP.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 5th edition of the Lexington City Council. Glad you're here. Before we call the meeting to order, want to review the guidelines for addressing city council. If you plan to speak tonight, invite you to sign up over here. And we request that you contact city manager myself prior to the meeting and ask that you sign up. And during the meeting, you'll be recognized during the citizens remarks section of the council's agenda. During this agenda item, I ask that these guidelines be followed. Ask that you stand at the podium and for the record, please state your name. And if you're a resident of Lexington, Virginia. If you want to be contacted, please provide your contact information to the clerk, Ms. Hostetter. We ask that you make your comments to the council and as a whole and speak just to us. We ask that you be brief, state your position and provide facts. Provide written statements and or supporting materials to the clerk for distribution to the council and the city manager. Debate is prohibited. This is a time for us to hear what you have to say and what's on your mind, not to have a debate. And lastly, we ask that you speak clearly as we want to hear what you have to say. Council works to listen to everyone and we historically limit comments to three minutes per person and five minutes to a group or organization. And I remind us all that the meetings of the Lexington City Council are formal, formal proceedings and are recorded. And with that, I would like to call our meeting to order. Again, thank you all for being here on a cold frigid night. May be redundant, but frigid is a more apt word to describe the evening. But if you all will please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes or modifications. Unless there's an objection, we will approve the agenda as presented. It is approved. No proclamations tonight and no presentations that I'm aware of. We'll move straight into the public hearing regarding ordinance 2024-13 to relocate the office of the registrar and I'll call him the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you, as councils aware, you have budgeted a project to remodel city hall. In preparation for that project, we're having to relocate the city hall staff, including the office of the registrar, which is essentially our board of elections, which handles our elections and voter registration and so forth. Because Virginia is a state that has chosen to participate in the preclearance requirements from the Department of Justice from the Voting Rights Act. We have to give notice to the attorney general before we relocate a polling station to make sure there's no adverse effect of relocating a polling station. So when we relocate the office of the registrar, we have to bring forward an ordinance like this one before you this evening. If you adopt this ordinance tonight, we will send a notice to the, to the state of Virginia. And they have 60 days to review and make sure that there is no adverse impact from the relocation of this to any voters. And in doing that, we want to make sure that, that we have ample time to do that. The plan is to locate the office of the registrar at 300 Diamond in the Lexington City School District Central Offices. We're making preparations for them to move there. Two employees will move there. And the, the plan is to have them relocate there on February 10th. So that, that allows for the 60 days to run to give the state of Virginia the time it needs to review this relocation. Once the remodel is done, we're planning to bring a similar ordinance back before you to authorize the relocation from 300 Diamond Street back to 300 East Washington. So we'll repeat this process in a, a year, 18 months, hopefully not any longer than that as we finish the remodel project. So that's the purpose of this ordinance. There are several legal requirements that we have to, to follow in addition to the 60 day preclearance period. We, we can't have an election within a certain time period after we relocate. So, so that, that'll be relevant to, to Mr. Carroll's discussion later this evening about a possible special election for next year. But, but this has been in the works for several months and happy to answer any questions and if Mr. Carroll has anything to add, I'm happy to defer to him.
Nothing to add. Happy to answer any questions.
Does council have any questions for staff? Hearing none. Thank you for the introduction of this item. And at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite anyone who would like to speak to this matter to be recognized. And seeing no one who wants to speak to this matter, I'll close the public hearing at 7:06 and ask for council's consideration.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-13. An ordinance to, to move the voting precinct to 300 Diamond Street.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mr. Betts, Mr. Alligood.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler.
Hi.
Ms. Strong.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you and good, good moving to the registrar as they organize things. They've, they've been bouncing around a little bit, but this will be positive move, I think for the community. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consideration of minutes. Don't think we've received those from the last meeting. Thank you, Janie. And we will address those. Next item is citizens remarks and comments. Is there anyone who would, no one has signed up, but is there anyone who would like to speak to council this evening? Seeing no one jumping out of their seats. We will close the citizen's remarks and comments and go to the consent agenda, item number nine, and ask for council's consideration.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion as second and ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler.
Hi.
Mr. Betts.
Hi.
Ms. Strong.
Hi.
Mr. Alligood.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Not too late to start training and you can start with the guy or the Jingle Bell Run on Saturday as a tune up for, for that race. I'm not aware of any unfinished business and reports and communications. Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith.
No report. We'll meet Monday.
Excellent. Main Street Lexington, Mr. Smith.
Shortly. Think you may have seen in the paper, a more or less synopsis of some feedback from downtown merchants about sales trending like slacking off some in, in the summer and fall, but fingers crossed for, for winter sales. Most of the signs are looking good in retail overall in the fourth quarter. So fingers crossed there. Christmas parade tomorrow night and Jingle Bell Run Saturday.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Not too late to sign up for the Jingle Bell Run. Come on. There's also a fun run with that, I believe, or walk one and a half mile. Maury Service Authority, Mr. Alligood.
No report other than to give notice that the Maury Service Authority Board is scheduled its regular December meeting for December 17th at the Osage Lane Water Plant.
Terrific. Thank you, sir. Planning Commission, Ms. Strong.
We did not meet last Thursday, but next Thursday, we have two items of business. One is a conditional use permit to allow educational use for VMI alumni agencies to use the upstairs of the Bank of the James's office space for a period of three years. And then we should also see a draft of our cottage housing ordinance amendment and so we look forward to reviewing that. Hopefully we're just about done with that. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Betts.
No report.
Raro, Mr. Ziegler.
The Raro Board of Directors met yesterday. Just a few small capital projects are being done, like at Brewbaker, the, the backstops that the city is, is helping with and we appreciate that. But then also the county has been working quite a long time, actually, at Rivermont, trying to work with the owner of the facility, which because Centra, there's been a few owners of that building and they finally have received permission to replace the lighting in the gymnasium. And so the gymnasium lighting has been very poor and we play pickleball in there, pick up pickleball a couple of times a week. And it was to the point where it was just very difficult to play. And now the, the, we will benefit greatly by that that the county's doing. So that's my report.
And if I'm not mistaken, the, the county is purging the bulbs. It wasn't a question of trying to get the owner to replace the lights.
Correct. The county has always been willing to take the lead, get the work done. Permission was very difficult to, to receive. And so they, we appreciate the work of the county staying after Centra and doing that.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Ziegler? Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
No report. We will meet on Wednesday, the 18th. Instead of the normal meeting on the fourth Thursday, Wednesday, which would put us on the 25th. So we'll meet on the 18th.
Much like the Planning Commission, thank you for making the sacrifice and not attending on Thanksgiving Day. I'm, I'm sure the planning department would have happily baked a turkey or something for you. For my report, just a couple of items. A deep appreciation and shout out to Public Works who during this cold, the trash is getting collected. The water mains that are breaking are getting tended to. The new asphalt that's not even two weeks old is getting cut to secure those lines. And they continue to do a great job getting things fluffed and buffed for Christmas. And once again, reestablishing the traffic light in front of my employer Cornerstone as the tractor trailers can't make that turn and choose not to make that turn and, and, and knock it down. So thank you to Public Works for their solid and consistent work and helping with the gobble wobble as well. I had a meeting this morning with Jennifer Palmer that you all may be familiar with, who's lived in Lexington for a number of years. And her boss, Ann Fitzgerald, who is the executive director of the Brain Injury Connections in Shenandoah. This is a nonprofit that operates out of the Stanton area. And they are now opening an office that Jennifer will be responsible for in Lexington, serving Lexington and Highland County for individuals aged three and older with brain injuries. It's, you know, an unfortunate circumstance for people to have concussions or from accidents, falls and things of that nature. As they indicated, it can take someone who's perfectly normal functioning individual and wreak havoc with their life. And this group has a variety of programs to work with individuals when they're struck with that, work with the families to help them to make the most of the, the circumstances that they may find themselves in. So it's fascinating, like so many nonprofits that do such good work, you wish there was no need for them, but they're there when you need them and, and doing good work. So if you see Jennifer, be sure to congratulate her and encourage her in the, the new endeavor that she's embarking upon. And lastly, was just going to check with, do, do you all receive the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission newsletter? Came out the past couple of days. See some, okay. We'll, we'll work on getting you added. It just occurred to me with the Lexington windshield survey was identified as one of the programs that they had recently completed for our community. They also articulated or detailed a story about the Bark that, that grant for Rockbridge County. But the PDC continues to do very, very good work for our region and anticipate that the executive director will have an update on the housing study at our 1216 meeting. So I look forward to bringing you back insights and up to date information on the status of the housing study, which is almost finished.
Actually got my copy at 9:15 this morning.
That's good. Good work. Pour it through it immediately, right? And that's all I have unless there are any questions.
You said our next meeting is when we're getting the update on the regional housing.
No, it, well, yes, it, the, it, the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission, we have a meeting on December 16th.
Okay.
The commission will be meeting and getting a, an update from the executive director. She will not be at our 1219 meeting. I don't anticipate, but I'll, I'll bring back from the six, from that Monday on Thursday, I'll have a report for you all.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think we'll have the results of the windshield survey in January.
Oh, great. Yeah, it's awesome.
Thank you, Mayor. Just three, three or four items to brief you on this evening. We have completed our four public listening sessions on the stormwater utility proposal and we've completed most of our meetings with the various larger property owners, including Rockbridge County, Rockbridge County Schools, VMI, Washington and Lee, city schools and, and a few others, Corillian Hospital. Of course, nobody is interested in paying additional fees, but as we've explained the program to them, as we've outlined, what the intended use of the funds are. I think they're, they're understanding the need for the stormwater utility and understanding the rational basis for how we're charging. It's a rational basis. It's not a perfect basis. It's, it's an imperfect system, but it is, it is a good one. The intention of those meetings of course is to meet with our largest property owners, show them how we're calculating their fee. Meet with them, explain it to them and get feedback from them. And a number of them will have additional information that they'll share with us, which will entitle them to stormwater credits, assuming the stormwater utility is formed. That work, as we've communicated to them, will, will likely happen in an iterative process over the next several months in the new year. And so they're, they're going to get us information and then we'll review that and have a meetings to, to discuss how, how credits can be calculated. One of the meetings that we were at today, for instance, with one of our institutions of higher learning, we were able to immediately get feedback that there's at least two areas of our calculation that need to be corrected. And we, we, we welcome that correction. So that, that was very positive. And that's the purpose of those meetings and those meetings will continue. So based on the, the information I'm hearing from the listening sessions and from these individual meetings with property owners, large property owners. My intention is to bring forward a stormwater ordinance for you in the next month. Hopefully at your December 19th meeting, it may slide to your January 2nd meeting. We have a couple of more meetings next week with large property owners, specifically our faith-based community. We've invited them to two open sessions, one on Monday and one on Wednesday. This week I had the opportunity to address the Rockbridge Lexington Area Ministers Alliance and, and made sure that they were aware of these upcoming meetings. And, and so those meetings can continue. Of course, if they can't attend, we'll meet with them one-on-one. So my intention is to bring that forward in the near term for your review and consideration. As the mayor mentioned, we've had a bit of bad luck in, in recent days. We've had a number of water main breaks. Traffic lights have been run over and some heating systems at city hall are, are suboptimal. I'll say it that way. So our bad luck is being dealt with, as the mayor said, by our Department of Public Works. So they're the ones who go out and fix the broken heater, the traffic light that it seems to be a magnet for semi trucks and water main brakes. I think they were out at least until eight o'clock last night on Lee Avenue fixing that. So I will echo the mayor's comments and pass on his appreciation and your appreciation to the women and men at Public Works for their hard work. The Virginia Department of Transportation is holding a public hearing on January 9th. That is for the Limekiln Bridge replacement. That public hearing will be at 300 Diamond at the Lexington City School District Central Office from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The purpose of the public hearing is for the public to review the plans. It's an open house style format. And, and for them to hear any comments or concerns or suggestions from the public about the Limekiln Bridge replacement. As a reminder, we had initially talked about doing this all in one construction season, but in order to keep the pedestrian access open, we're, we're likely to split this into two, two calendar years in order to, to maintain pedestrian ability to cross at that location. Should weather force that public hearing to be rescheduled, the, the backup date is January 15th, same time, same location. We'll be promoting this a little bit in our electronic newsletters, even though it is VDOT's public hearing and not ours, we'll be communicating with our public. And then as I promised to, to council, at your table this evening is about an inch of paper for, in preparation for our bond rating. This information was capably prepared by Finance Director Jen Bell and Davenport. As Mayor Friedman had asked council members, Strong and, and Ziegler to be an ad hoc committee to review them. They've already reviewed this material, given some great comments, which are not reflected in the documents in front of you, but will be reflected in what we present to Moody's and Standard and Poor's on Monday. There's no test on this material. So it is there for your information, but it is all presented to you in preparation for some policy decisions and preparation for issuing approximately $22 million of bonds in the first quarter of next calendar year. So have that information available for you. Jen Bell and I will be looking to have two-on-two meetings with council members. They can be as long or as short as you want. And as I say, there's no test, but this is just great preparation for the issuance of the bonds. Thank you.
Questions?
One quick question or just kind of a information. For the Limekiln Bridge replacement, is VDOT paying for that replacement? And so that's a 1.6, 1.8 million dollar project that VDOT is putting the bill for. And frequently in the city of Lexington, we have sometimes had to pay for our bridges. So this is a, a nice situation where VDOT is picking up the tab. So it will be inconvenient, but at least we're not paying for it.
Didn't we pay for the first repair, the interim repair to keep that bridge functioning? And then maybe because of that, we got some good points from VDOT to for them to take over for the 100% in this next phase of it there.
Yeah, yeah. VDOT has been a great partner in this project and others.
Is there anything that could be done about the, the placement of that traffic light that keeps getting knocked over or is anything that, I mean, I don't know. Is there anything that could be done to try to avoid a recurrence of getting knocked over repeatedly?
I certainly hope so. I, I, I don't, I haven't had a chance to speak to Public Works since, since today's three-peat of the, of the accident, but, but my intention is to talk to Public Works and see if there's any, any solutions or anything we can do to mitigate, mitigate this.
Did, um, two, two things just to share with you. One, you have to drive on the sidewalk to hit it.
Pretty close.
So that, that's, that's a problem. The second is Public Works. Earlier in the year, made the parking space in front of Bank of the James handicap spot, which is not frequently used to make it easier for people to swing out and make that turn. That, that step has already been taken to give a wider berth, but when you have truckers that perhaps are not as experienced and don't understand where their rig's going, because it, I think somebody had pointed out, we're fortunate that no one was injured walking on the sidewalk because that they can't hit that without going on the sidewalk.
So good five or five feet on the sidewalk. I mean, it's, it's pretty far.
I'm not good with my distance, but.
It just does seem problematic that it keeps happening.
Unequivocally. Yeah. Your, your question is, is spot on, but I just point out if they don't drive on the sidewalk, we're okay.
Obviously, they will continue to drive.
To that, to that point, is the insurance carriers or the trucking companies covering the costs on?
We are pursuing those claims. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yep. And the questions for the city manager? City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I mentioned at the last meeting that we were working with Spencer and John Dryden at the county with regard to Sheriff Funkhauser's retirement, trying to come up with a plan for coming, coming up with a special election schedule. And the, the, the process is really controlled by the code. And Tom mentioned this earlier, there are some windows when you can have a special election. After you move a polling place, for example, there's a window, after you move any type of, make any type of significant polling change, you can't have an election for like 60 or 90 days thereafter. You can't have a special election within 55 days, but general election.
Chairman, I'm, yeah, if you can.
Too far away?
Yes.
All right.
Well, pull that thing tight, just like a rock star.
Yes, sir. You, you can't have a special election on the same day as a primary election, for example, because it drives drives turnout for a particular party typically. And that is, so when we looked at the windows and we also looked at the desire to maximize voter participation and candidly save costs associated with a special election, the code, while the code says schedule the special election promptly, it also allows a governing body to go to the circuit court and say, we'd like to schedule the special election for the next ensuing November general election. schedule the special election for the next ensuing November general election. So what Tom and Spencer and 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 we all have concluded is, and we're going to recommend to you is that we ask the circuit court to bless a special election on November four, twenty twenty-five to fill the vacancy in the sheriff's position. That's uh, that has to be filed with the court within fifteen days of the vacancy, so it'll have to be filed in the first half of January. So we'll bring this resolution to you if that is your desire uh, on uh, the nineteenth. I mean, it could be on the second of January, but it's ready to go. So we'll probably go and just put it on the nineteenth agenda. But that, that's all I wanted to bring uh, to your attention and obviously happy to answer any questions about that or or anything else going on.
Legal questions relative to the city.
Hey, I, I'm, I'm. We're moving quick and I'll answer anything.
Have you had a chance to speak with uh, Cheryl Wagner about?
We are talking tomorrow at ten thirty.
Great. Thanks.
Very good. Other questions for the city attorney? If not, uh, next item on the agenda is new business, consideration of a lease for swing space at five thirty-nine Nelson Street. Call the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this somewhat relates to the item, the ordinance that you passed earlier. As I mentioned, we're making preparations for vacating the city hall structure uh, for, for the remodel, to turn the building over to the general contractor. Uh, just as a reminder, I, I may have communicated this in a, in a recent memo, but we're, we're hoping to open bids for that project on January. I believe January twenty eighth. Uh, so in preparation for that, we need to find locations for all the city, city hall staff. Um, earlier this evening, you passed that ordinance for the two employees who work out of the office of the registrar to locate at three hundred Diamond. As you may recall from a prior report, uh, the Office of the Treasurer and the Office of um, uh, Commissioner of Revenue will move to six two six Waddell. That building the city owns, Public Works has already made significant improvements to it in order to make it uh, fit for purpose for their uses. Uh, their plan is to move on March tenth. Uh, similarly, um, the remaining city hall employees, which consists of the Finance Director, Human Resource uh, Human Resource Director, uh, IT, uh, Planning Department and City Manager's Office. We will locate at five thirty-nine Nelson, the second story of the former BBNT building. Um, so that corner, uh, that building is at the corner of Nelson and Walker. Um, some of the other landmarks nearby that will be noticeable to people will be the Kentucky Fried Chicken, the Sheets and Cattlemen's Market across the street. So we'll be locating uh, on the second floor. And this uh, issue before you is to authorize the lease for this property um, for the lease of a little under four thousand square feet of space. Uh, I recommend approval, according to the city attorney, where we, council can approve this by a voice motion. Uh, no legislation is required. So that is the request of staff. Happy to answer any questions about this or the overall remodel and swing space plans.
I had a question about the um, tenant improvements. Is there a projected cost for the tenant improvements?
There is. I think it's, it's very minimal. It's, it's IT, I'm going to back IT out of that. Um, primarily, we're putting in uh, a, a security door. Uh, landlord and I are still working out some issues with the regard to the, the elevator security and and um, but the, the tenant costs are relatively minimal. We're taking the space as is and it's generally fit for purpose. So I don't recall the number off the top of my head, but it's, it's relatively small, uh, a few thousand dollars.
So thank you very much.
Strong.
Is there adequate parking there or have you made other arrangements for parking?
So we believe there's adequate parking. There's a handful of spaces that that are available to city employees that will be um, essentially behind the Truist Bank uh, along uh, the back of the, the Truist Bank property. That and a couple of other spaces will be where our city employees will park. And that will allow the space closest to the back door, which is how you, the most expeditious way to get in. We're going to work on our wayfinding to make sure that people know where to go. Um, so we think there is adequate parking, especially with the treasurer or the commissioner of revenue located at Waddell. There's a lot less walk-in traffic at City Hall uh, associated with the uses that are going to be located at five thirty-nine. You do raise a good point. One, one issue that we don't have at five thirty-nine is uh, the equivalent of the second floor conference room uh, that is used by a number of community groups. So we'll be communicating with those organizations that they'll need to find an alternative location, whether it's Raro or the Miller's House Board um, or any of the other associations, ARB and and so forth.
Right. Thanks.
Threshold, threshold. Thank you.
Any other questions? One observation I would make is I was um, thinking about this and um, driving to uh, City Hall recently. It occurred to me, uh, you know, today is uh, tax day and everybody's taxes need to be paid and they can drop them off at City Hall and it can, it'd be done. The next tax time, we will likely be in a new location. Um, just being able to, and and there is no opportunity for grace if you don't pay your taxes on time. There is a penalty. Um, and it, it's not waivable. Um, even if you've paid it for the past fifty years satisfactorily, there is no grace on it. Um, but just making sure that we have good signage uh, directing people to the new location because with it being fractured locations, it could be a little bit uh, confusing for folks. So anything we can do to eliminate that, I know we'll take a lot of steps, but just uh, aware of that uh, potential inconvenience for our fellow citizens. Um, and but, and also by the way, ran to the Commissioner of Revenue at the post office and she was expressing great gratitude for uh, the location where her office is going to be located, the improvement in the um, uh, facility where she's going and then the commitment of the city council to make uh, City Hall, uh, get it refurbished and and good for another uh, several decades of service to the citizens. So um, was very wa- warned my soul to know we're going in the right direction, not only for our citizens, but for our staff as well. So. Yes, sir.
Uh, question, you, you kind of, you know, uh, it's not just even taxes. A lot of people pay their utility bill in person and that's every month. Um, and even if they don't do it in person, they might uh, have the address preloaded into their banking software and they just fill in the hundred and twenty dollars for water a month and they pay it. Um, and so will, you know, when you, when someone moves at, mail is forwarded for a, a period of time. Will, if, if I am, do not update my address in my software, uh, will my check still get routed to the right place?
It sounds like a difficult question, so I'm going to call on Finance Director Bell to answer that. She's been leading the.
Or should I change my, and just do the auto debit and not, you know, on that?
That's always an option, but the, the treasurer's office, um, where the water bills are paid, they've had a post office box for many years and that's not changing.
Perfect. Great.
But then for any other correspondence, just so everybody's aware, I was able to speak with the postmaster today. And he said that he'll allow us to forward the mail for two years. So the whole time it'll just end up at the new building.
Great. Thanks, Jen. Thank you.
It's good to know. There are no other questions. I would ask for uh, council's consideration on this item.
I make a motion that we approve the lease for uh, City Hall Swing Space at five thirty-nine East Nelson Street as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a dueling second. Any further discussion? Not roll call vote. Mr. Betts.
Hi.
Ms. Strong.
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler.
Hi.
Mr. Allagood.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for uh, the work by uh, city manager and and uh, uh, staff as well as city attorney and getting this uh, to us now as we continue to make progress on the renovation of our city hall. Uh, exciting to see it all come about. Six months ago, we were kind of, I feel, at least in my opinion, we were still dreaming and talking about it and now it's really happening. So uh, very anxious for uh, the bids to come in very competitively so that uh, we can comfortably move forward um, with the renovations. Uh, I'm not aware of any other business to come before council this evening and uh, being as such, I will uh, we will stand adjourned. Wish everybody a good evening and uh, don't forget the parade tomorrow night.